Right, okay, I've got seven o'clock, so if CNET is ready, it looks like they are, and staff is ready, I will call to order the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting for Tuesday, November 19th. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we will go to the manager for announcements and roll call.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to members of the board, staff, and the public here for joining us this evening for the November 19th regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. This meeting has been properly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a hybrid meeting with the option to attend virtually and in person here in the main meeting room. If you are attending virtually using the WebEx platform and wish to speak here in the main meeting room, on behalf of an agenda item, please say your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on when the chairwoman calls on you. If you are attending in person with us in the main meeting room and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please address the board at the podium and state your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on. Prior to commencing the meeting, I have a few short procedural items to cover. First, members of the public attending using the WebEx platform are asked to remain muted during the meeting to prevent any ambient noise from disrupting the meeting. If a member of the public is acknowledged by the chair, they may unmute their microphone for their question or comment. Secondly, board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that minutes may accurately reflect the action taken. And finally, a roll call of the Board of Supervisors will now be taken to ensure that all members can hear and interact. Please indicate that you are here when your name is called. Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Patterson?
Here.
Mr. Heller?
Here.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'll also announce that we've had two executive sessions, one on November 4th regarding personnel, and one on November 19th also regarding personnel. Now, as well, under announcements, we have a recognition of David Maude Ricker for his service as Director of Public Works.
Thank you, and I would like to share with the board, staff, and members of the public that this evening we have prepared a certificate of appreciation for Mr. David Maude Ricker, Public Works Director for his service to the township of 26 years. Provided with you, Chair, you have the certificate of appreciation if you would like to read it.
All right. Whereas Mr. David Maude Ricker has been the Ferguson Township Public Works Director and has served the local community for 26 years, and whereas in this role, David was responsible for overseeing the municipal facilities, fleet, equipment, streets, sidewalks, arbor care services, maintenance and management of the local transportation network infrastructure, stormwater and flood management, coordinated the capital improvement program, and led with a sustainable, long-term growth and development approach for the township. Whereas David is a resident of Center County, Pennsylvania, who has demonstrated the highest level of civic responsibility, and therefore the Township of Ferguson is hereby recognizing and congratulating Mr. David Maude Ricker on his dedication and many years of service as well as his contribution to the local community commended this 19th day of November 2024.
Thank you very much.
We can't thank you enough, and if you wanted to share any words, I'd give you the chance.
Well, I wasn't really prepared to speak, and I wasn't sure if this action was actually taking place. But I will say, you know, it's been a pleasure, and I've had the opportunity to serve under, you know, a number of elected officials and managers, one of who's in the office in the audience here today, and this is Martin. So I just, I've enjoyed my time here, and I appreciated the opportunity.
Thank you so much again. We're going to take a short recess at this time so that we can present Mr. Maude Ricker with a plaque and take some photos with the certificate of appreciation. So it will take about five minutes of a recess right now.
Just that laugh just sounds...
Well-intended.
Going to wait for the manager to come back in, and then we'll resume. Thanks, everyone, for your patience. I don't like which one. It looks like we are all back, so I'll call us back to order. Thanks, everyone, again, for your patience, and thanks, again, to David Maude Ricker. It's quite an accomplishment, and glad we were able to take that time to recognize him and that. So thank you. Okay, we'll move to introduction to the Planning and Zoning Director, Kimberly Smith. And I'll turn it over to the manager.
Thank you. We are happy to have Ms. Kimberly Smith join us from Illinois, and so she's had quite a very extensive background in planning and zoning, and she joins us with 20 years of experience in planning and zoning. We're happy to have her. She started here with the township on Tuesday? Tuesday of last week, and so this evening she is being formally introduced to the board and to the public, and we are happy to have her join our team.
Thank you. Well, welcome. We're so pleased to have you here and hope you're settling into our community and really looking forward to working with you. I'll give you an opportunity to share any thoughts you have, but again, you don't have to because I'm totally on the spot.
No, thank you. It's been a very warm welcome so far, and I am excited to be here, and I'm excited for all the work that's in front of us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Great, and looking forward to getting to know you more as these meetings progress, so. All right, so we'll move on. No proclamations this evening, so our next item up is public input. This is an opportunity for anyone with comments on an item not on this evening's agenda to present them to the board. So if there is any comment on an item not on tonight's agenda, now is the opportunity to speak on that. I'm not seeing any, so we will move on to the approval of minutes. There are minutes for four meetings in the agenda. Did anyone have any corrections to any of those? Yes.
The October 15th meetings, and we sort of had touched on this before when Amari had brought it up, but the minutes don't really reflect the dialogue. There was some important dialogue that took place that night, and it just merely listed that Resident X spoke on this issue, but it didn't really give any detail. So it would be hard for somebody to know the positions that were expressed. So I would, for those, I would like that maybe if we could go back and have them elaborate on some of the dialogue that we received would be helpful for me, I mean, as a matter of recording, but...
Yeah, I wouldn't have an objection to pulling that one.
Absolutely.
Add a little bit more detail from the dialogue that evening. Is it among the board that you're requesting more detailed dialogue or specifically citizen input?
I think citizen input, in particular there, was what I thought really is important to reflect.
Yeah, I wouldn't have any objection to pulling that one set out and taking another swipe at including a little bit more elaborate comments.
Yep. Great, thank you.
Is there anything else?
Actually, apropos, and I haven't looked at, looked for this in particular, because, but do we call out where recordings are available in CNET? Because I know sometimes I'll go through minutes, and then I'll say, oh, that's right, I want to go back. And then I go back to the CNET, and I pull it up, and then I review it, et cetera, to hear the dialogue. We don't do, do we?
Like, is the link to the CNET meeting in the minutes? Probably not within there, but...
I was just wondering if maybe that would be another way to, again, for transparency, just to include the link whenever they come out to say, by the way, here it is, so folks can have both of those tools available.
Yeah, and maybe on the page where it's listed, I think, instead of maybe just buried in the notes, I think, or in minutes, I think, yeah. Okay, excellent. All right, any changes or corrections to the minutes? Okay, I'm not seeing any, and we're removing item one there. That was the October 15th, so I'll take a motion to approve the minutes from the other three meetings, October 24th, 29th, and November 13th.
This is Patty, so moved.
Amari's second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, thank you. Okay, we will move to Authorities, Boards, and Commissioned Reports. At first, we have the State College Borough Water Authority Report. And do I see Mr. Stryper? I do not. If anybody else sees him up there? No, I do not see him up there. We did have a report included in the agenda. Okay, we'll move to... We did have a report included in the agenda. Okay, we'll move to the University Area Joint Authority Report. We did have a report included, but I see Mr. Kumpel here, so if you had some things you wanted to highlight, I'd invite you up.
Again, congratulations to Dave on his service. I remember when Dave was hired, one of the first tasks that he had was that we had an EPA violation right off the bat with a wetland and out on Tadpole. I think we had encroached on some of the wetland out there. So, you know, the first thing that he had to do was get us out of trouble, and we appreciated his service, and it's been great working with Dave for the years that I've been here. Now, the board does have the report, a written report in their packet, but I do want to highlight a few things. Ozone Disinfection Project, this is a major project that's been ongoing for the last year. Right now, we're using ultraviolet, and we're transitioning to an ozone disinfection process that will destroy pharmaceuticals and endocrine disruptors are concerned to groundwater providers. So I think this is a big project that, and a great step forward. We've had a little bit of problem with the manufacturer and some of the equipment, but we've got that ironed out, and we should be on board here this coming week, the week of Thanksgiving. Our big project right now is this anaerobic digester and sludge dryer project. If you're going out I-99 and just look to the right, if you're going towards Bellefonte, why, you'll see this project. It's a huge project. It's a little over $70 million. It's going to replace the composting program that the region has had for a number of years, and we're going to be using this digester to produce a methane biogas that'll actually be able to be used on the, on site, on the campus of the UAJ as an energy provider, as well as the possibility of putting it into the natural gas pipelines and getting a premium price for that. The project has a number of other partners, not financial partners, but they're going to be providing the sludge from their facilities, Bellefonte, Tyrone, and Mid Valley. And we're also working with the Center Region Recycling, or Center County Recycling and Refuge Authority to get their organics, if they can work out a way of separating those. This will all be a point of distribution also for food materials that are expired. I'll be able to bring those in, run them through the digester, and that'll be a revenue source, actually, for the authority. You've all been probably following the rate dispute with State College Borough. This has had an impact over the last couple of years on the ratepayers here in Ferguson, College, Harris, and Patton. We have been able to work out an interim agreement with them that it will actually expire January 1st of 2025 if we don't come to a final resolution, but a partial payment has been made, the amount of $2.5 million by the Borough. But we are looking at another rate increase. I think all the ratepayers have been notified of that. It's about an $8 per quarter increase in 2025. Putn Town Road Interceptor Act 537 Plan, which is a special study. This is important because this project is looking at how effluent is transported through Millbrook Marsh. Currently, the study is determined whether or not the capacity of the transmission lines that go through the marsh are sufficient size to handle the new development that is occurring in State College Borough. The study has come up with a couple of different options, but a fourth option really is now on the table, and that is, relies on the Borough to reduce their infiltration, their INI, into the system. So if they can reduce their flows into the system and account for the new development that they're planning for, there may not be a need to increase the size of it. But, as you know, this is an environmentally sensitive area, and it certainly would be great if we didn't have to go into that area and do an infrastructure improvement project. I think that's a bit. I don't think there's anything else that I need to really highlight on the report. I would encourage Ferguson Township representatives to think about, going forward, an update to the 537 Plan, which is the sewer service area. This study is really out of date. It's almost going on 20 years, and it's something that probably our regional planning agency really needs to undertake. I'm sure they've got that on their, on their plate of things to do along with comprehensive planning. So, other than that, I'm hoping for any questions you might have.
Thanks so much. And yes, they do, they've mentioned having that in their sites to update that. So thanks for mentioning that. Other, any questions for, for over here? Sure.
Thank you, sir, for that report. Just one, maybe, small question, hopefully it's small. Did, before UAJ made that decision to increase the fees by $8 a quarter per resident, did they look at utilizing additional reserves or something before making that decision? Because it sounds like, to the extent there's a positive impact or resolution with the Borough, there'd be kind of a windfall. Did they look into any of that?
The reason that the increase is actually required is twofold. One is operational costs have gone up, chemicals, personnel, et cetera. But the other issue deals with our bond indenture. We have to have a certain ratio of revenues to the borrowing, and in order to maintain that ratio that, under the bond indentures that we have for the revenue bonds that have been issued, we had to have sufficient revenues to cover that ratio. And so that is one of the other reasons why, you know, the rates have, had gone up. If we had had the money coming in from State College Borough, we would have met that revenue ratio. But because we're lacking in that, that revenue source from State College Borough, we've had to increase some of our rates in order to meet that bond indenture ratios.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question. What's the revenue ratio?
That is a question that is excellent, and I don't know the answer to that, but I can try and get that for you.
That would be great. Thank you.
Yes. So have you got much public comments from Ferguson regarding the rate increase and the rate dispute with the State College Borough?
Not that it has been brought to the UAJ board.
Because I have got a couple response, comments from the public regarding that, and I think some of the consensus is, it's like, okay, this has been going on for a while. How much longer? Why am I even paying? Because they do state in the letter that rate dispute is part of the rationale for raising those rates. So I think our residents are starting to maybe reach a point of fed upness when it comes to that, so.
We do have, we have litigation that's pending before Common Plea Court right now. We've tried to enter into this interim agreement to hopefully we can find, we've hired a mediator, so there's somebody that's mediating between the two parties to try to resolve the issue. Whether or not that's going to work out, I don't know. But I think from UAJ's standpoint, the authority has the ability, under the Municipalities, Municipal Authorities Act, to set the rates as long as they're reasonable and uniform. And that was one of the things that we were attempting to do in changing the rate structure after a 20-year agreement with the Borough expired.
Any other questions? No, those were all my questions. I appreciate that, that full answer to that, because I had received some, some questions and communications about that, too, so.
We have a meeting tomorrow night, so I'll pass that on.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks very much. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and I don't see Mr. Gracie Griffin. So we will move to, let's see, Special Reports and Acknowledgements. Under our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusionary Activities and Acknowledgements calendar, we have National Native American, American Indian, and Alaska Native Heritage Month. Veterans Day was observed on the 11th, and Thanksgiving will be observed on the 28th. All right, we'll move to COG and Regional Committee Reports. At first is the Parks and Recreation Governance Committee.
I did not make that. Jeremy attended for me, and...
Yeah, I don't have anything really further to add. There was a lot of extensive discussion about adding on committees and other opportunities, but other than that, really no action was taken.
All right, any questions?
I was, I'm curious, the motion to, with these kind of joint meetings between the authority and the COG committee, was that, did that carry?
No.
There was no action?
There was no action.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right, okay, well, thank you.
Is there some discussion we should have there, like?
Yeah, if you, did you have something else?
I was just, like, no action because folks said, hey, we're not going to do this? Or is this something that we, as a board, should, I don't know, push for?
You were talking about, this was on maintaining a general form committee.
Then has the alignment, which I'd liked in that kind of, in the responsibilities to make sure that there was that alignment with the authority? Because I think there was some misalignment in that the authority would say, hey, go build the thing, and then COG was committed to go build the thing, and so then that directly affects us to build the thing and, and come up with the money for it. So I'm just...
Yeah, I just want to clarify. So this was a motion to keep the Parks Capital Committee, but change it to, is that without, change it to something different, some kind of like Budget Oversight Committee or something? Okay, yeah. And so that just didn't move anywhere? I mean, I think we've all been in favor of having some kind of oversight on the budget, so I think that...
I think that there's been a lot of, as the, because it was also during budgeting time, and I think COG staff, the new executive director, I think that they're still sort of pushing things off until we get, until the new year and start fresh there.
So not necessarily done for, especially since there wasn't a vote.
I don't think so. I don't think so, right. I haven't heard any, anything. And the chair of that committee is always really good about reaching out if there were anything like that. So I think it was just more of a postponement until the new year, see who's on the committee again.
Yeah, I think it's a reiteration of our preference for maintaining some kind of, you know, oversight committee of the general form on that yet.
One thing that seemed like there was a lot of more opportunities to just regularly communicate and make sure communications get down to the elected officials.
Yeah, that would be helpful, too.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Okay. All right, Finance Committee.
So Finance Committee, a couple of different things. Went through the summary budget process, just reviewed kind of the whole process at a high level, pluses, minuses, et cetera. One of the things I just wanted to bring to folks' attention, there was the IRS notification. There was an accounting timing issue that has resulted in a fine for 2022 of about $7,200. There's also the potential for a fine from 2023, but we did self-report it at the COG. That has a potential to have a max penalty of $34,000 if it is, if it is put through at its max level. However, it should take about 12 to 18 months for the IRS to come back with a ruling on that. But, again, this was self-identified that this error was made, so we've already kind of fallen on the sword to say, please have mercy as you think about this fine, but we'll know more here in the next 12 to 18 months. They've already taken processes to remedy it. Long story short, through some previous finance, we'll say, staff, there was maybe single points of contact for credit cards and other information that essentially never got transferred over to the new staff. And so when there was an issue, essentially, people thought they were in contact with somebody that really wasn't there, so they had no way of getting in touch with or following up. So, long story short, that has been remedied, where now more staff are involved with these different transactions to have different points of contact with the IRS. The one thing I wanted to bring attention to is the executive director did mention, and this was kind of an aside at the end, that they're considering redoing the budgeting and looking at developing more details around the true cost of what municipalities are getting, which might inform a new model where if you're participating in something, you might pay, you pay more. Everybody might pay a base fee, but then there's a use fee on top of that. So we expect to see more discussion around that next year. But, again, the seed was planted, that this is something that the executive director will be looking at coming up next year. So stay tuned, please, for that. That's all the details I have, but I think that's an important one, knowing the different areas that we invest in COG.
All right, questions?
So regarding the IRS matter, that had not came to Executive Committee yet. And it, and I, the COG chair did reach out to me, and so, haven't heard back, but it kind of seems to be one of those things that probably should have been disseminated further than just Finance Committee.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Well, I...
Definitely appreciate it. It looks like, you know, the best actions are going forward, and, yeah, just got to learn from it and plan for the future.
Precisely. And, again, I'm always happy to hear when an organization says, and we found another mistake, before somebody else finds it, right? That, that goes a long way, especially having worked with the government, that hopefully that will reduce this concern.
But that's a good note to bring back to the Finance Committee, that it hadn't been elevated to the Executive Committee, and, you know, probably in the future, things like that should, so. Any other questions for Matt? All right, Executive Committee.
Hey, that's me. I have nothing further to add. I'm trying to think, this was not November Executive Committee, but October Executive Committee. So, yeah, nothing to further to add. We were all in general form and such, so.
Very good. Questions about Executive and Facilities Committee? Amari, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Focused on nothing. The Facilities Committee ended up not meeting on the 6th, but that's the agenda. There were no major items to be, for action, but there were going to be some updates, so we expect to receive those updates next month.
Gotcha, okay. And Human Resources Committee?
I just met regarding the leave of absence policy. Still a lot of discussion around whether or not to have in the policy that, not necessarily offer, but that management has a discretion of offering unpaid leave should someone want to maybe take a few weeks off for, don't know, anything from, like, professional development, community service, maybe an extended vacation beyond what their paid time off would allow. And then we were looking at some health insurance rates, which had gone up about 20% in COG, and then just looking ahead at next year.
Questions on HR? Nope. Okay. And then we have the Joint Land Use and Community Infrastructure Committee meeting with the Center Region Planning Commission. Most of this was an update on the comprehensive plan, the community engagement portions of that and the timeline of that. And then we also had a presentation on the Act 537 Special Study that Mark had mentioned, and some good dialogue on that. So, but that was an interesting point that Mark raised, because I don't think we went over that in depth about the Borough, being able to manage more capacity on their own, as I understand that that was the point he was making. So, any questions on anything discussed there? All right, so Climate Action and Sustainability Committee?
A couple of highlights. The at-door fee waiver, passed a motion there to go ahead... A couple of highlights, the at-door fee waiver, passed a motion there to go ahead and not charge residents that have an ADA concern and will actually pick up trash directly at their door. The managers of the municipalities will approve those applications, so Madam Manager is nodding that she was aware of that. Then finally, we talked about the stewardship network and the AmeriCorps person actually doing a little bit more work for, towards the Sustainable Communities Initiative, where essentially they'd be the face and of trying to gather folks around from different municipalities, looking for a one-year commitment. I'll just expound on some of the high-level stuff that was brought up through this. But essentially, what we would be looking for are folks to have in the community to commit to one year, maybe two, one steward from each municipality, and they would go through a training to better understand some of the local initiatives, et cetera, and stewardship approaches. And then from there, they would be supported by the AmeriCorps person at the COG, who would supplement some of the work that the COG staff in this area are already doing. So it's, it's this relationship between the sustainability planner and the AmeriCorps coordinator to go ahead and increase stewardship and awareness and other climate actions, climate activities within the community. So far, there have already been, I believe the number is, I don't know if I have it in the report, yeah, they were looking at capping these normal, these trainings, that would be maybe one per week for seven weeks, at about 30 people, but they've already had a substantial amount of folks throughout the community offered to be involved or to be stewards in this conversation. So it seems like there's a lot of momentum behind this. One of the questions was asked around the budget, what does this do and what does this cost? And to that extent, what this gets us is it saves the staff a little bit of time because, it saves staff time, I should say, because they're not the ones leading the stewardship efforts. They're not the ones in the community holding these meetings and discussions. It would be up to the stewards of those areas to do this. So it is a little bit of a trade there in the time. We even discussed potentially high schoolers that might be involved in this or interested in, in working towards it. So again, just hatching the idea of what this looks like and expect more details to come in the upcoming months.
All right, thanks, questions?
There was one, it was the first object on your, on your list.
The waiver fee?
Yes, who pays for that waiver? Like, is someone else paying for that waiver, or is the, the entity kind of just, hey, you check it out, we'll, we're okay?
We absorb, yeah, I'm sorry, when I say we, the contractor, Bergmeyer's, they absorb it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. They just want everybody else to do the work around approving it.
Precisely, and then they'll go the extra mile to do it. And that was part of the discussion, too, because they didn't want to, for example, they were concerned with maybe 55 and older neighborhoods. That would be a lot of houses to have to all of a sudden say, you know, in our approval process, now we all have to get off the truck and go to the door, et cetera. So how do we do this? And the ADA was one of the means that we thought of and through the forums there, so.
Good question.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, looks like Public Safety Committee was canceled, Finance is on again, unless you have anything to add?
No, I saw that, unless you guys want me to do it backwards.
Unless you thought of something in the meantime, move on, and then Executive Committee, so. Yeah, I guess your meeting was canceled because General Form is canceled, so.
Yes.
All right, we'll move to Staff Reports. We have the Police Department Report up first.
Yes, thank you. Attached to your packet there is the Police Department Report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, questions?
I do, so I have to get back to that page, but I noticed that there was an uptick in, by the way, thank you, the information that you guys are providing regularly, really helpful. Because as I look at kind of month to month and year to year and just overalls, it's very helpful in me understanding kind of where we are. But I did notice that there was an uptick in, I think it was the Level 2 Criminal Mischief and DUIs.
Yes.
What's, is there, is there a, yeah, do you have any rationale there on potentially why?
Your criminal mischief, so we've been having some of those graffiti issues happening down on the West College Courtyard, which we're picking up again. We are investigating those, so they're being recorded. And some other people breaking things, you know, criminal mischief, too. The DUIs is just, it's a busier year, it seems to be. Our officers are definitely more proactive, and there's more people not using Ubers apparently.
Ubers are much cheaper than what
You know, they really are, and you know, they were, they were a great thing over the years when, when we only had a couple taxi companies, the Ubers came in, you saw the DUIs go down, but for some reason, they're coming back up again.
Anything that the township can do to be more proactive and kind of helping folks recognize that there's gonna, you're gonna have a problem?
With the DUIs?
Yeah, I mean, that
Nothing really, I mean, NHTSA and the DUI, Pennsylvania DUI Association, which NHTSA is the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, they do, you know, barrages of advertisements. You know, we could, with the Police Department itself, we could begin to advertise a little bit more with, with some of those and put them onto our Facebook page if we want, you know, I think that's a great, good idea. It's not, it's never a bad idea, that's for sure. That's the only suggestion I could make as far as making little things more aware. We did used to put the billboards out saying, you know, during the busy weekends, you know, drive sober or get pulled over, those types of things, you know, police are out in force. Those are kind of the common tactics to warn people. But other than that, I don't have any other real suggestions as far as what you could really do. It's just awareness is what it really is.
Do we keep track of, like, where these DUIs get nabbed? Like, is that
Yeah, I mean, we could create, you know, I, I would know where they're at, I couldn't tell you off the top of my, I mean, off the top of my head, they're usually what I call the North End, which is North Atherton Street, Martin Street, West College Avenue, Blue Course Drive. But it doesn't exempt the West End either, that we get them out there on the West End, too. There's a way to, I could create something to say where most of them are, which it's gonna show the North End, I can tell you that.
Right, right, right.
But do we want to do that? I'm sorry.
I was just thinking like targeted, like, community education sort of thing.
The officers know that, the Police Department knows that, but for educational purposes for the public, no, we don't really release that.
Right, right.
Okay, yeah. And so, yeah, I just, one of the other things, too, and I do like the idea of posting more on Facebook, because I will say occasionally, when Ferguson posts something about, have you seen or do you know these people? Usually I hand my phone to my son and say, do you reckon they look like high schoolers or something? And he'll go, ah, so it's, we're looking at those things. I know other community members are, too. So anything related to, hey, be smart when it comes to drinking and driving, et cetera, and get an Uber, whatever it takes, I think the message is really appreciated.
And there's lots of things that are advertised through those, those grants and those facilities. They give us things that just pre-made, post-up. So that's not, that's not a hard thing to do.
Yeah, great.
The other thing, I noticed that the Community Relations Crime Prevention, we're doing like three and a half times more of that year-to-date, October 20 through 24. Is that more data, or is that more, we are doing actually more? Are we recording more, or are we doing more?
Probably recording more, to be honest with you.
Got it, okay.
And, you know, they have school checks separated, so that is not what it is. I was just, I was gonna go there for a minute, but no, they are separated. So yeah, they're, they're recording more, and, you know, a lot of drills and stuff that are done in the school that are requested by the schools usually count as a community relations and not a school check. So there's a lot more of those being done, too.
Done and recorded, as being done, right? So we're getting data on the amount of services that your department is handling, and therefore we can say, hey, here's all the goodness that people receive on a day, week, month
Yes.
basis, cool, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I was just gonna say, I, I would, I too would be supportive of additional outreach when it comes to DUIs, especially as we approach Thanksgiving and even the, the new year, where there is going to be a lot of events and happenings where alcohol would be involved. And we want people to make the right decision, ring in the new year with, with ease instead of all the consequences that come with a DUI.
Very good.
Yeah, like you mentioned, we've often had the large light-up sign on Blue Course. So yeah, I think those things are all, you know, just keeping people mindful, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have one more, just on a different part of the document. So in the EOF 2024, I did see that we've got, you know, several handcuffings, but I assume DUIs will get you cuffed. I did see that there was this, kind of on page one, about three-quarters or all the way down, there's that kind of open hand slash hands-on. Is that a little, there's, you know, maybe a little bit of resistance there, where somebody, okay. And open hand as in like, there's been some fighting, or just more you had to use your hands to get somebody to move there?
Yeah, open hand's more moving people around and, you know, holding on to them.
Okay.
You will see there's a mechanical compliance there.
Yep.
That is more of lock, joint locks and takedowns and that type of stuff. Somebody, somebody fought with our guys a little bit there on those, too.
Got it. And then out-agency assist on that same one, that's, we helped another township or municipality on that? Okay, got it, all right, very good. Is there any? Cancel that, I, I've got some thoughts on things, but for now, I'm good, thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, all right, anything else on that? No, okay. Public Works Director's Report.
So in addition to my report, I'll just note that last night, the Arborist reported to the Tree Commission, I'm sharing this with the manager for the first time, too, that the spongy moth count that he just recently completed showed quite a decrease in egg masses significantly. So it's, it's likely that there may not be a requirement for aerial spraying. He has to finish, do a little bit of finalizing of that report, but virtually every area that he sampled, same places that he did last year at this time, showed significant decrease in mortality and decreased the amount of egg masses. And that's not uncommon because it's cyclic, so. We may be on the downside of that increase in population. That's all I wanted to share in addition to my report.
Well, thanks for sharing that. It's good to know, all right, questions?
Just considering one of my works was mostly affected by that, as well as Ward 1, my number of communications regarding spongy moths this year was down 100%, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Very good, all right, any other questions? And if not, we have the Planning and Zoning Department Report, which was included. And I'll look to, the Planning and Zoning Report was also included as an attachment to the Agenda Packet, and I'm happy to answer questions that I can. Great. All right, questions on that? I've never seen some of those plans this evening, so. No, all right, well, thanks very much.
Sorry, one small question. So there's the few that are on the page, how many are in the backlog, kind of, that are kind of cycling their way to get to the page and to the Planning Commission? Do we know that number?
I do, I don't think there are.
For the land development?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, I can't answer that for you. So in the backlog right now, the Planning Commission, on their next agenda, they will see one land development plan that is for the Penn State CERT Lab. I believe you saw a concept or sketch plan for that. And then actually received today, or went out today for review, is a land development plan for Blaze Alexander. That will go on the January Planning Commission Workshop Agenda. So there are essentially three land development plans in-house under review.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are any other questions? If not, we'll go to the manager for Manager's Report.
Thank you, provided within a communication to the board, had a series of key highlights for the board's consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions. My report will be uploaded into the agenda, but the board would have received informational updates and a correspondence from me. And I'm happy to also bring public recognition to a staff member, Denise Meyer, as she recently completed, successfully completed her Pennsylvania Notary Examination. And so she will now be able to provide notarizing documents here internal. And we are very happy for that service that she is now able to provide. Also happy to share that the Kaboom, nonprofit organization that brings forth playgrounds, replacements for and by the community, will be here in 2026 for Autumn Wood Park when we need, as Autumn Wood Park has been identified as a playground site that needs to have updated equipment. So those are just a few highlights, and I'm happy to answer any specific questions the board may have.
Questions for the manager? Questions for the manager? Not seeing any. Okay, all right, so we will move to unfinished business. First, we have a public hearing on an amendment of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, on Chapter 19, Signs and Billboards, Section 107, exempt signs, Section 108, temporary signs, Section 109, permanent sign types by use, Section 111, commercial uses, and Section 113, permits. And we'll go to Christina Bassett, Community Planner.
Thank you, Madam Chair, which is my computer here. At the October 15th, 2024 Board of Supervisors Meeting, a draft amendment to Chapter 19 signs, this is right in my place, one second, was reviewed by the board. An emotion was made to authorize staff to advertise the public hearing, and here we are. Provided in the agenda is the draft ordinance, draft amendment to Chapter 19, signs. The proposed changes to the ordinance include removing the requirements for sign renewal fee, removal of regulations for window signs, and removal of regulations for the murals. I'm just gonna review those really quickly. So first, the regulations removed for murals are they do not exceed 300 feet, contains less than 3% tax, be located on a commercial building at least 50 feet from material road, and remain intact for a minimum of two years. This was put forth by the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan, who would like to see these regulations removed to, as a way to, for them to enhance the Pine Grove Mills area, they would like to install a mural, and they believe that other areas of the township would benefit from removing these regulations to a way to encourage installation of murals, as we see some around State College, Bellfont, popping up as a way to show local culture. Also, the window sign regulations, we'd like to remove those as they are burdensome for staff, they're burdensome for small businesses as they're a financial burden. Every time a sign gets changed, a new zone, a sign permit would have to be submitted. And it's very difficult to regulate these window signs, which they can take up and take down as their usual, like Klingon material. So they can remove them, put up new ones every day, and staff would never know. And the last item is sign renewal fee removal. We propose to remove this as it also is very time-consuming for staff, and we get very little compensation in return. It's a burden on businesses, and by removing the renewal fee, it could encourage compliance with our current sign ordinance. One may not apply for a sign permit as they see it as a burden every year to pay another $50, another $50 for every single sign they have. That is all I have, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Okay, well, let's go ahead and have a public hearing, and then we'll come back for other questions and comment. Okay, so I will open the public hearing for comments on this item. Seeing no comments, I will close the public hearing, and we can go ahead and do some comments and discussion, I think, before there's a motion, because I saw some people kind of bringing some stuff up. So, comments, questions?
Sure, after the last meeting that we had to discuss this, when, maybe October 15th, et cetera, I did go back into the content neutrality and the Supreme Court ruling and everything else. And it does seem, though, that there are some levers to pull if a mural has obscenities or different things on it after it's put up that we can still lean on. So I'm a little more comforted in this idea of removing the size of the, of the murals, et cetera, and some of those restrictions. But it does seem like there are laws about commercial use, non-commercial use, et cetera, and litigation that's already been out there and tested in the courts on what can be removed, et cetera. So I'm a little more comfortable with this going forward. So I'm a little more comfortable with this going forward.
Any other questions before we take a motion?
Yeah. That's actually what got me less comfortable is the, it's focused on non-commercial. And so what about commercial? In this, I, I would expect that there's a little bit more, um, input from the township for all murals, period. So this, this non-commercial purpose is, I'm not sure if it's new or added, I guess, after the last planning committee, but I, I still remember it from the last time we moved forward with this. Yeah.
We had a long discussion about the murals part, and so I thought, I was kind of surprised to see it redlined in here too, so.
So I agree with removing the fee. If it, if it's 50 bucks and we're spending, you know, 500 bucks in staff time reviewing it, it's not worth it. Uh, I agree with the window signs, somebody puts up the, you know, whatever and takes it down, puts up something different. That makes sense. I'm just, I'm still, I'm concerned about this mural part of it. So I'll just pause there.
Yeah. Yeah, same. Yes, that's also why, wanted to make sure we asked all of our questions before we had a motion. Cause I was a little bit unclear about that too. Cause I know we had a lot of concerns about the murals, but not about the permit fee, the, um, the windows, the window signage, and, uh, whatever the other item was. Um, anyways, it was the murals that kind of caught me too, and this is, cause that was all taken out. So I guess I'll look to the manager if you can table this.
And bring it back if the board would like.
Um, I'll just add, um, I did actually have some words in, was it appendix B? Was that a different one?
I'm sorry.
Oh.
There was like an appendix B somewhere that had something, uh. Ah, never mind. That is a different matter that I have. Um, but yeah, I, so would you accept a motion, Madam Chair?
For?
Table.
Table. Yeah, Patty just asked a question about, um.
Can we do it in pieces? And, and the reason that I ask is because, uh, as we're getting so close to the new year and if we're going to be setting fees and stuff at our organizational meeting, maybe could we vote on sections?
Let's just set the fee to zero next chair.
Oh, echo.
So this evening, what's in front of you is an ordinance amendment for Chapter 19 with very specific sections to be amended. So it would be an all or nothing for this evening. However, uh, we can table it and we can refer back to what was discussed and remove the red line from the first section of Chapter 19 and bring that back to the board as discussed. And I will also acknowledge, yes, the schedule of fees will be presented for board's consideration on December 3rd to approve and then bring back on December 10th for adoption, uh, after a public hearing. And those fees have already been adjusted based on the dialogue the board has had. So you will see a fee, uh, set to zero for the renewal. And you will see, um, if there, if there are any adjustments to the one-time application fee, it will be in the schedule of fees. So that, that action has already been drafted and prepared for your consideration at the next meeting. This particular item, however, I would say if there's still, uh, interest in discussing, we would table it and bring it back for discussion.
So is tabling it what you'd prefer at this point and then coming back for, um, and rather than voting it down or?
Based on the discussion that I'm hearing about the murals and some of the, a lack of consensus, uh, I would suggest that you table that if, if there is a lack of majority and consensus here. So we can just bring it back and make sure that we're all on the same page, make sure that we're all, um, that there's at least a majority for Chapter 19 as it relates to murals. And I will pull.
Yes, I think that makes sense. Yeah.
So if I may, I think it might be good for whenever that conversation does come back around to have a deeper understanding of what levers we do have. If we can maybe focus on a couple of those, um, and call out where we don't have any levers and examples of that. Because I think this is, this is a concern of mine because I know in Pine Grove Mills, we have a great vision. But that doesn't mean that somebody else in the township may have a very different vision for something they want to do for two years. So again, that's, that's a concern.
Okay. So yeah, if we want to, um, look for a motion here to table.
Well, before I do that, my issue, I guess tabling it would table this particular item, uh, it needs to die. And a phoenix needs to come out of it perhaps.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was wondering if that, it just makes it cleaner.
So for me, I want to go back and review, um, exactly the discussion as it related to the first section on murals. But you're absolutely right to make this clean and bring it back for a discussion and not come back to this particular recommended motion. It would be no motion this evening, uh, and we will just bring it back for discussion.
And if I may, this is one of those times I went back through the minutes to say, oh, content neutrality, thanks to the Assistant Township Manager, and then I went to the CNET video to say, okay, what exactly was said in that exchange? To dust off some of those cobwebs. Might be good to have that thing.
So if we want to, um, vote on this, um, this amendment to, uh, the ordinance.
You could take a vote to actually, um, for it to die, or you can take no action at all this evening.
Cause if you bring this back as tabled, we've held a public hearing on this.
Right.
Um, we would still have to authorize a new public hearing on something else because, so if you, if we tabled this, can you bring back?
You can table the discussion. Or you can take an, or you can take a vote and it can die and everyone can vote against it.
Madam Chair, I move that the board does not adopt this ordinance and directs the manager to review and update the mural section.
Is that fine? Can you make a motion in the negative like that? I think we need to make a motion in the positive.
I can move all over.
Yeah, I just, I'm just wondering.
It is fine because as long as you all agree with the motion, it will be fine.
I'm looking here. Postponed definitely rejects or kills a main motion without bringing it to vote. Gaz.
Could post, I mean, as long as there's consensus among all of you, what Omari said is fine.
We're basically not moving this action forward.
And bringing it back for discussion.
And we're going to bring it in for a review.
Yeah, he wants to make a motion in the negative. That's what I'm wondering.
Right, right. Well, yeah.
I'm okay with it. If it's, if it.
I, I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna second that.
Just second it.
This is Matt.
I'll second it.
Patty, I'll second. I'll second that negative motion. That's okay. I know it's been done. I know it's been done. So, um, and this is a roll call vote.
Only if we were making the ordinance amendment.
Okay. So we don't have, so we can do a motion.
Correct.
And this is to not adopt these, uh, changes to the ordinance and to bring it back for further review. Okay. All those in favor, any other discussion first? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Very good. Okay. Okay, thank you. Thanks for that and I anticipate we'll see that again, uh, very soon. Okay, let me just bring this agenda back up and we will move to a public hearing on a zoning ordinance amendment of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, amending Chapter 27, Section 20515, Light Industry Research and Development, and Chapter 27, Part 5, Conditional Uses, Section 50227, Places of Assembly. We'll go back to Christina Bassett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On February 20th, 2024, the township received an application for a proposed zoning ordinance text amendment, uh, specifically to Chapter 27, Part 2, Section 205 dot 15, uh, the Light Industrial Research and Development District. Uh, the applicant is requesting the use of place of assembly be added as a permitted principal use in the IRD zoning district. At the August 12th Planning Commission meeting, staff recommended places of assembly be permitted as a conditional use and provided such conditions. Planning Commission reviewed the conditions and recommended the board supervisors approve the zoning text amendment to the places of assembly as a conditional use. The draft is provided in the agenda. For you to review, and I'll just give you a little background on what was talked about. So first of all, just as a refresher, thank you, Jane. We do have three different definitions of a place of assembly. Uh, they're based on size, uh, capacity of each place of assembly. And it's geared towards the community, neighborhood, or regional, and thus the differing, uh, capacity. So we are proposing all three in places of assembly and letting size be the determinant. Just kind of a background of where places of assembly are currently permitted and not permitted. They're currently not permitted in the light industrial research and development, multifamily or R4, mobile home parks, industrial or forest game lands. They are permitted either as permitted by right or as a conditional use in all other zoning districts. Uh, they are permitted as conditional use in commercial, office commercial, general commercial. Uh, the regional are permitted as conditional use in the rural residential and the regional permitted as, in the work, as conditional use in the rural agriculture. The conditions are currently outlined in our zoning ordinance. Uh, Section 50227, I'm not going to go through that. It's in the packet. But basically we're proposing to include all these conditions. But plus, this section for places of assembly in the IRD. So it's items like show us a site plan, proposed use, hours, maximum, maximum occupants, any anticipated special events. You can't anticipate everything, but the key highlights, if it's a church and they do a Christmas pageant every year, we, we want to know about that ahead of time. Um, the impervious coverage was changed for this to not exceed 60%, so that's in line with the rest of the IRD. And then we limited any accessory uses to the last 10 bullet points. Uh, Planning Commission reviewed it and recommended approval with these said conditions. Uh, CRPC reviewed it, had some questions about any potential loss revenue. That was the main concern that came out of CRPC and we can't speak to any losses that we don't know about. We'd rather have an occupied building or space than not. A place of assembly will draw more residents into the area and create a more thriving community. That's all I have. If you have any further questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this too is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing for comments on this item. Not seeing any, so I'll close the public hearing and I'll ask for a motion. Unless there were questions.
I have a question.
Did you have a question?
No, I'm making the motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, so I, I think I, I was fine with the, the use. I, I think my, um, small nuance here is that, um, maybe just from a verbiage perspective, it's, you know, number 11 in, in, was it appendix, exhibit B. It says place of assembly in the LIRD, um, zoning district shall require, A, a detailed site plan, dot, dot, dot. B, a description of the proposed use, dot, dot, dot. C, primary or accessory uses that are not enclosed shall be limited to operating from dawn to dusk. And so C and D, so it kind of flips into like, here are the things that are required. And then it's got requirements for C, D, and E. And I just thought that verbiage was.
So there was a discussion over this one. Um, this is in, meant for activities outside, so.
Primary accessory uses that are not enclosed, meaning outside. Does that change how you?
No. So again, it's, it's, um, it, it's like having a sentence with, you know, something, comma, something, comma, something else, and they all relate to each other. And this is like something, comma, something. And then flipping it again, like the, the A and B are required, like should be in a plan, they're required. And then C, D, and E are more requirements. Does that make sense? And so I was just like, well, why didn't we maybe write it to say a description, maybe the description of a, uh, of the, with no enclosures? Or, you know, and then, you know.
I follow you. Okay.
A, the plan with the percentage of impervious coverage not to exceed 50%. So it's, it, it, there's just a flip in the way this reads. And, and that's what I was trying to like, at least if I was going to implement this, what am I giving to you? Right? And so it's got, like, C, D, and E are not, give this to me, it's just do it or don't do it. That's what I'm trying, I was just trying to kind of, that piece. If this, if that's just more wordsmithing to make it a little bit cleaner for someone that's submitting a detailed plan to you with these, uh, six, five items, then cool, go ahead and do that off on the side and I'm okay approving this. I just want to, for clarity of the person submitting documentation that's using this, I just wanted them to have that very clear what they're delivering to you for review and approval based on the ordinance.
If I may, I think even, this is almost like if you add the word that after require on number 11, then colon, then it all makes sense to me. That primary or accessory uses are not enclosed, shall be limited to operating from the, it just seems like something even as simple as that maybe encompasses all of those. But I agree. Yeah, it's, one of these things is not like the other. There are actually three of these things.
So I'm okay making a motion that includes, you know, yeah. Are we, well, I'm okay making a motion.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I approve, I move that the, to adopt the ordinance to amend the zoning amendment to Chapter 27, Section 205 dot 15, with minor amendments to exhibit B that make the submittal to the township more clear.
Hi, Mr. Thompson will second that.
Thank you. Okay, discussion. So you're talking about just adding a that and, uh, maybe a semicolon or something with that.
Couple of words that make it, again, it's saying.
It just can't be a substantive.
Yeah, it'll be shall require. It's all the same stuff, but it's got this kind of.
Some was in the positive, some was in the negative. Yeah.
It's a required versus requirement. So you can turn it into required for the other three with a couple of words. As Matt was saying, that or.
That colon might.
Yeah, it's just.
An accessory use plan that is limited to, right? That type of thing.
Yeah.
I'm not hearing a substantial change.
I'm hearing, uh, clarifika, language for clarification, and so we can certainly bring that in and make that change.
The intent is here.
Yep.
I get the intent. I'm, I'm looking out for people that are submitting a document to the planning, uh, director to say, here's what I'd like and just clarity on the five things that they need.
It's just clarifying the verbiage that's, that's personated in there. That, that's clear to me. Yeah. Okay. So we have a motion and a second, and this is a roll call vote. If there's no other discussion, I apologize. Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a roll call vote for ordinance 1105. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we will move now to a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, repealing Resolution 2021 dash 37 and adopting a revised allocation of earned income tax and real estate and real estate transfer tax, transfer tax revenues to the Transportation Improvement Fund with the establishment of maximum fund, a maximum fund balance for the Transportation Improvements Fund. And we'll go to the manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Provided with the agenda is a narrative that details, uh, and reviews the discussion held by the board at the October 29th Board of Supervisors Special Meeting, where the board discussed with majority consensus, uh, interest in amending Resolution 20, 2021 dash 37, uh, understanding that the initial resolution for a, uh, Transportation Improvement Fund policy was enacted in 2001 with several amendments since 2001 to 2021, uh, Resolution 2021 dash 37. And prior to, excuse, yeah, prior to this meeting, the drafted policy has been prepared, reviewed by legal, and is presented for your consideration. This resolution has been written in such a way where we have obviously documented policy that informs the, the changes that will take place to our, with our funds, the TIF funds. And it'll be certainly a reference for the future and recorded as part of our resolution that details what are anticipated ending fund balances for fiscal year of 2025 and what that transaction will look like from a transfer, inner governmental transfer fund from the TIF to the general fund. So the resolution policy document documents pretty, in a pretty detailed fashion, perhaps differently than how, as it's been written in the past, to help inform future managers, staff, and electeds what is, what action is taking place and how that is redirecting the reallocation of revenue for earned income, real estate, and real estate transfer taxes to fund our capital infrastructure.
All right, thank you. Okay, this too is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing for comments on this item. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
This is Matt. I move that the Board of Supervisors move to adopt the resolution.
Ms. Omari, second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, really appreciate some of the, thank you, Madam Manager, because I think this gives some of the whereas in here. I was curious why it's in there, so you kind of answered my question already, that you're kind of the next you, or the you after you, is getting a little bit more context by some of the other ordinances that maybe don't have that context, and you're maybe guessing why we did certain things. But I would just, I would just highlight that, if I recall correctly, that the, these funds that were pushed into the TIF, it was to, back in 2008, support a tax increase. It was a very clear, we're doing a tax increase, and we're going to put it into this TIF to fund our road and transportation projects. And so what we're doing here today is, because I don't think anybody back in 2008 in their wildest dreams would imagine that it'd be $5 million or four, whatever amount is in there today, I don't think they'd, they, they would, in their wildest dreams, thought that that, this would just fund and fund and fund and more and more and more. And with the quality of our roads, I would argue, are kind of the best in Center County, we can kind of take some of those funds and allocate them elsewhere. So this is a good use of dollars to fund some of the places that have also increased in cost, because we've, you know, across the board, we've increased across the entire township. So we're now in a position to be able to use some of these funds in other areas, which is good. But we're also using these in other areas, whereas kind of the initial, initial plan was for this, these dollars to be used for transportation. So I think it was, it just, I feel like I needed to kind of reinforce that point that we are taking dollars that, you know, it's revenue, it's taxes, tax dollars, and using them for other things in the township, and this is a good thing. But this should be a one-time thing. It shouldn't be all the time. We need to kind of lower this bar every single year, every single month. Like, there's, we're keeping dollars in there specifically for our transportation, our, our roads. So that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, any other discussion?
No, but I just thank you, Omari, for the, the very clear sort of description of what we're getting at. I appreciate that.
All right, other discussion? Not seeing any, and this is a roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a roll call vote for resolution 2024-22. Supervisor Thompson?
Yes.
Supervisor Heller?
Yes.
Supervisor Stevenson?
Yes.
Supervisor Patterson?
Yes.
Supervisor Strickland?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, in my agenda, I think I have something backwards from the print. I printed mine early, so I think maybe something got changed. So I have COG budget next, but I think, is that what you all have? Okay, okay. Well, we are all on the same page, okay. All right, so authorization for advertisement of a public hearing for, no, that is what's wrong. It's wrong on here.
This is showing the township budget.
Yeah, it is, and I have in my number four, the COG. But on here...
Oh, I'm seeing it.
I have the COG.
I have COG number four, yeah. Yeah.
Just specify which budget we're looking at for record.
And then I have... Sorry, let me just skip down here. On my number eight, I have our draft operating. Is that what you all have?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is that, you have something different?
I have it on the website, number four, as the authorization of advertisement for public hearing on the adoption of the operating budget.
My five is the COG budget. And this would have been what was pulled prior to the meeting.
Okay, so we'll go by what's live on, sorry.
In the full packet?
Mm-hmm.
In the other, like, by itself packet, it's COG, then it's E. It's two different ones in the, oh, my. I've got both of them.
For November 19th? For the agenda?
Yeah, like, agenda versus agenda packet, they're two different ones.
Okay.
So there's a small, small kerfuffle there.
Thank you. I see what happened. An older version was uploaded. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we all have the COG budget. I don't want to throw off anybody who's looking at, what's, what's live on the?
They're both live. So if you're looking at the agenda,
Oh, okay.
If you're looking at just the agenda and not the agenda packet, you would see in the agenda, item number four is authorization for advertisement of a public hearing for adoption of the draft 2025 operating budget. If you're looking at the agenda packet, I don't have it up.
Number four is...
The one with 500 pages.
Yes, so...
COG summary.
Apologies for the confusion.
That's okay. I have the COG budget and then the applications for the land development plans, and then our operating budget. So I'd suggest we do COG budget and then the land development plan so that those folks can move out.
That's a great idea.
Okay, so I'm going to go to number four on our printed copy, which is the approval of the 2025 Center Region Council of Government Summary Budget.
Will you take a motion?
And that is number five in the agenda packet.
Yep.
Okay, so we will go to the manager for this.
All right, so for the COG.
COG Summary Budget.
Budget. So we have here, as provided in the agenda packet, the narrative for item number four. At the October 28th, 2024 Center Region Council of Governments General Forum Meeting, the General Forum voted to approve the 2025 budget and referred it to the participating municipalities for adoption by December 31st, 2024. So at the, at a previous regular meeting, the board did review the 2025 summary budget and provided comments to the executive director, which were passed on to the Finance Committee, and it's our understanding reviewed and discussed for a final summary budget, which is presented to you this evening for a recommendation to approve the 2025 summary budget for the Council of Governments.
All right, thank you. Any comments, or I'll take a motion?
This is Matt. I'll move that the Board of Supervisors approve the 2025 Center Region Council of Governments CRCOG Summary Budget.
Mrs. Patty, I'll second.
All right, discussion on this item?
Just my only note, COG, has been, as I've seen it, a fantastic entity that we put dollars into, and we receive quite a bit from it. And by evidence of, we're the highest use of the public library. We don't have to fund our own fire department. We kind of participate in that. There's several parks that we don't kind of mow. We still mow a lot of our own, but, so I, I think we should investigate utilizing COG a bit more for those efficiencies across the, longer. But, um, but this, this budget, I think we beat it up pretty good as a team. So thank you, guys. Thank you, folks. And I, let's, well, I'm good. Let's vote on it, if you'd like.
Do you have any other comments? Yeah, and we, we really did take our time to very thoroughly go through that budget. We provided, I thought, a lot of thoughtful feedback, and so I would probably enjoy even more comment back on our comment in the future. And, you know, some attention paid to that, so. But I was encouraged anyways this year by the approach, I think, so. So there's that. All right, so we have a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, thank you, okay. Next up, we have an application for consideration of a modification waiver for chapter 22, 516, landscaping for 1900 Circleville Road Preliminary Land Development Plan. And we'll go back to community planner.
So actually, the next three items are all related, and if it's okay with you, we could review them together as one entity. That would be great, but then make three separate motions. So the 1900 Circleville Road Preliminary Land Development Plan proposes the construction of a single-family semi-detached dwelling, also known as a duplex, with a footprint of 1,520 square feet at 1900 Circleville Road. The duplex will have two three-bedroom units. The site is zoned Township Residential, or, I'm sorry, Townhouse Residential for R3. There is an existing single-family detached home on the lot, and it will remain. The existing driveway to the house will be removed, and a new driveway just to the west of the house will be added for access to the duplex and a parking area having eight parking spaces and one ADA space. The modify, first modification is to landscaping, section 516. And it is to not plant all the buffer yard requirements on the east side and the south side of the lot. The applicant contends that the adjoining uses are compatible with the townhouse use and is requesting not to have to plant all those plantings. The second modification is to sidewalks, and that is in, in order to save a 36-inch tree that is between the street and the single-family home. The applicant is proposing to dedicate 13 and a half feet of right-of-way to the township, and this tree would fall in that right-of-way. In order to preserve the tree and not disturb the roots, the township arborist, engineer, and the applicant work together to come up with this plan, and it'll swing the sidewalk out around the tree, but this then pushes the sidewalk onto the applicant's land. So there's the modification for going on to the property, private property, and the design of the sidewalk. The applicant is here and can explain all the engineering behind that better than I can, if you have any questions.
Yeah, if you have something to add before we...
Yeah, thanks, Christina.
I can pull up the plan to a few...
Yeah, a couple of things, just... Ah, yes, I'm already ready to pen and tear engineering. And the plan we've been working on, it's, it's just a small little site. It's taken some time to get through. Very challenging with trying to save the one tree, working with getting the stormwater on the site. And as we're going through the different items there, one was with the buffer yards. And it's zoned R3, and on the east side, there is a single-family house and a, and a townhouse, and a duplex. Pass these down. Then just from the organs for buffer yards, you pass them around. And basically, on our lot, is a single-family house and a duplex. So I thought, I thought those were compatible uses. So was a buffer yard needed there? I didn't think so. We're still putting pretty much all the buffer yard plantings, except for the shrubs, except for six shrubs. So we're still planting it, we're landscaping it. And plus, we're keeping two existing trees on that property line, too. So it isn't like we're not going to plant anything there. And then on the south side, it's just a, there's existing townhouse development. And again, it's, you know, before, that's a compatible use. Plus, could you go to the landscape plan? Plus with that, the, there is a part of the stormwater easement that we can't put the plantings in. So I just did a mixture of evergreen trees and understoryed trees. I'm still screening it and buffering it, but not to the buffer yard requirements. But I also feel that they're compatible uses, and, you know, preordinance is to screen non-compatible uses. So it was just a small thing trying to, you know, we're, we're still landscaping it and screening it. There's a duplex here, a single-family house. We have a duplex, single-family house. I'm still landscaping it, except I didn't add the shrubs down below. But it's, it's kind of tight, tidier. Plus, we're keeping two existing trees there. And then there's a, there's a townhouse development here. I just wanted to put some evergreen trees and understoryed trees, which actually probably screen it better than having all the different buffer yard requirements there. So I just, you know, wanted to request a waiver for that, or a modification request for that. And then for the sidewalk, there's an existing 36-inch feet down here that, and yep, we needed to put a sidewalk along the front of the property. And so that was working out kind of a, a special sidewalk design and keeping it on green, not disturbing the roots. And, but that's still required a modification request. So we got that in. Other than that, it's just a duplex development in the back, in the backside, a new parking lot, a stormwater management area. And then we also got to pipe the stormwater then off to the adjacent Greenleaf, Greenleaf Manor Nursing Home, back around to their site to discharge it. That's the closest place we could discharge it at, and we're getting an easement for that. And Planning Commission also wanted an area for the refuse containers up here for all of them. So we added that for their recommendation, too.
Any questions and comments, and then we'll go through each item in motion. Yep.
I will say, I'm looking forward to this property being developed, and I'll tell you, because the sidewalk ends on one side of the property, and it begins on the other side of the property. So if you want to traverse there, you actually have to walk across the yard, like you're walking in somebody's front yard. So I applaud, you know, saving the tree, and I know the arborist and others were involved from the township, and coming up with this little bend in the sidewalk to get it around there, so.
And the sidewalk design, it's one where we're not going to be digging up, disturbing the roots, too. So it was kind of a unique design there. Plus, that area currently is not township right-of-way, but we are dedicating that as right-of-ways also as part of this plan.
I think it'll be an improvement for not only the look and the feel of the property, but also those that use that sidewalk and everything.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that added sidewalk connection's going to be wonderful because that was a resident concern that I, that was presented to me even before I took this seat here. And also considering there is a nursing home down the road from it, 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 it is nice to have that connection should a resident or resident and their family want to just take a little walk around.
Are there any bus stops on Circleville?
Um, I believe there's one, there's one up around here.
Was that a laser pointer?
Yes, yes, this is a laser pointer. And then there's one down past this bottom corner of the page. Yeah.
Thank you.
There's two bus stops around there.
All right, thank you, thank you.
And then I think there's a third one on, yeah, there's a third one in Havershire. Yeah, so, yeah. Anyone else want the laser pointer? Anyone else want the laser point?
Really appreciate the collaboration and the work to get this through here. Love the idea of kind of decreasing the buffer and putting some evergreens there. So, as they grow, it'll kind of provide that, at least from a site perspective, kind of a clear barrier. Yeah, just the collaboration, to be able to get this through the process and know you've had some issues, or you alluded to some, it's taken a while to get here. I hope it could be sooner, a little bit timely for the next person coming through, but definitely appreciative of the work you've done, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christina.
All right, any other questions or any other discussion? Not seeing any, so we'll just, we'll go through each item and do each motion. So, item number five was the application for consideration of the waiver for landscaping. Would someone care to make that motion?
This is Matt. I move that the board supervisors approve the application for consideration of a modification slash waiver for chapter 22-516 landscaping for the 1900 Circleville Road LDP.
This is Patty. I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, we'll move to item number six. That was the application for consideration, the modification for sidewalks. If someone would like to make that motion.
Jeremy, you got the contact. You want to do the sidewalk?
Yep, give me one second here. Wait, wrong motion. Mr. Thompson moved that the board supervisors approve the application for consideration of a modification waiver for chapter 22-512 sidewalks for the 1900 Circleville Road land development plan.
Is Amari a second?
All right, any discussion? And again, a creative solution, so appreciate yours and the staff's time and working on that. All right, no other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, and then, item number seven, the land development plan. Someone would like to make that motion?
Is Amari, I move to conditionally approve the 1900 Circleville Road preliminary land development plan with the conditions outlined in the community planner's memo dated 12 November 2024.
This is Patty. I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Christina, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a small note, Madam Chair.
Yeah, sure.
This is the second plan that's come through with applications for waivers and the land development plan that have gone right through. I just want to thank the staff for the work that it takes to get here. And the changes that have been made and necessary to do this, thank you, because it's smooth. Thank you.
And the planning commission spent quite a bit of time on it, so.
Sorry, thank you, planning commission.
They've talked about this at many meetings, so, yeah, definitely a lot of work put in by all, so thanks for acknowledging that. All right, so, my number eight, we have authorization for advertisement of a public hearing for adoption of the draft 2025 operating budget, and we'll go to the manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, the discussion, or, excuse me, I started actually on a different So, the board of supervisors received the proposed 2025 annual operating budget and conducted two public special meetings to review the document October 24th and on October 29th. The amendments to the budget that were approved with board consensus have been incorporated into the document that's in front of you this evening and is available and recognized now as the draft 2025 annual operating budget and provided within the agenda as a memo to the board and lists the amendments that were incorporated, also presented in the manager's letter to the board within the 2025 draft annual operating budget. And that copy of the budget is available at the township building for inspection and accessible by clicking on the link below the narrative in the agenda. Happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, the board is asked this evening to approve the budget and then authorize for public hearing to adopt the budget at the December 3rd meeting.
All right, thank you. We can start with comments unless someone is prepared to make a motion, either way.
This is Matt. I move that the board supervisors approve the proposed 2025 annual operating budget and authorize a public hearing for adoption of the budget for December 3rd, 2024.
Is Amari, second?
All right, discussion?
Lot of time, lot of effort, lot of dialogue. We've gone through this thing page by page.
Yes.
So, good work, team.
Agreed. Other comments, discussion? Not seeing any. Any from the side? No, no. Okay, if there's no other discussion, yeah, I just agree with those comments Amari made. This was a very detailed, thorough discussion at the, at the work sessions on this. So, appreciate everybody's time and attention to all of this and all the work that went into providing this for the board, so thanks very much. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, thank you. Okay, we'll move to, and this is, I think we're on the same item number now, number nine?
Number nine.
Okay. Discussion on the Ferguson Township revenue with consideration on options for raising taxes for 2025 and beyond as expenditures continue to exceed revenues as seen in the Ferguson Township annual operating budgets since 2017, with 2021 as the exception. We'll go to the manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the special meeting held on November 13th, the board had requested with consensus to add to the November 19th regular meeting a discussion to consider raising taxes. And this evening, our finance director, Todd Grady, will discuss with you a potential plan as also requested by the board for potential tax increase for the board's consideration with three proposed tax increases over the next three years. I need to really press upon the board, however, that because we cannot anticipate what our expenditures will be in 2026 or 2027, we have only been able to propose what we anticipate our expenditures to be in 2025. The proposed step increase of a tax increase over the next three years is with a proposed or anticipated beginning and ending fund balance for each subsequent years for 2025, 2026, and 2027. It is based on the expenditures being consistent, which we know is not actually a realistic situation, but we're also not trying to guess what those expenditures would be in 2026. But to provide you with a snapshot of what a proposed tax increase would look like over a three-year span, we are presenting to you an assumption that we know is not correct, the expenditures will remain the same. And so, while you may see a reduction and a dip into the general, the general fund reserves in 2026 or 2027, please just be mindful that that is with the expenditures staying the same. We know that's not a reality. But with that, we can put, project on to the screen, and I will yield the floor here, and our finance director can talk a little bit about what's being proposed and answer questions. It's, and you'll see here that the date, the proposed, whether it's 2025 or 2026, we can just identify it as year one, would be a proposed tax increase, a real estate millage increase of 1.5, and then a property transfer tax increase by a quarter percent. And then, in year two, a proposed real estate millage increase of 1.5. And in year three, we would see that go, have an increase by one millage increase. And you would see over the three-year plan, there would be quite a significant reduction of a need to go into the general reserves. Again, with an assumption expenditures stayed the same. And I'll look over to Todd Grady to see if he has the additional detail he would like to provide.
Thanks, I can just review that. So, at the top, we, you can see the project, the proposal for the next three years. The next box down below shows the general fund balance if we don't do anything. So, in 2025, it would show an ending fund balance of $6.4 million, and that is already with a transfer from the TIF account to the general fund of $3.2 million, which is on the right side, the fourth item down under assumptions, which we approved that today, so that will happen. And then, in 2026, we would have a beginning fund balance of $6.4 million, ending fund balance of $3 million, because that deficit would have to be absorbed. And the same thing in 2027, which would show the ending fund balance in 2027 of negative $354,000. So, that's, that was the deficit the stamp program has stated about. Now, down in, down below, in 2025, it is showing what happens if we do the one and a half mils in a quarter. So, the one and a half mils would generate about $925,000 in taxes additional, and the quarter property tax would about $260,000 in additional real estate transfer tax. So, the general fund balance would then end at $7.6 million with a deficit of $2.2 million overall. And then, that $2.2 million would carry over, and for 2026, then the general fund balance would end at $5.4 million with a deficit of 1.2, and it just carries over to 2027 with the additional $617,000 in tax, and that would have an ending fund balance of $4.1 million and a deficit of $660,000. And then, also on the right, I just had the assumptions, like the manager said, that real estate stays the same, property tax transfers remain the same, expenses remain the same, the TIF transfers happen, and for 2025, we're predicting general real estate taxes of $1.494 million. The box down below is if we have a recommended, we're working in the minimum fund balance policy, a four-month minimum fund balance policy would have a recommended general fund balance of $6.4 or $6.1 million. So, it's four months of $18 million in budgeted.
Thank you.
So, that's, if you have questions, or we can certainly help answer those. So, there's a few assumptions, but...
All right, thank you. Okay, whoever wants to start with the discussion, questions?
Okay, I'll ask a question. The required, recommended minimum general fund balance of four months, what's the source of that recommendation?
The township's auditor, Baker Tilly, has provided a two-to-three month minimum, and so we did four months, just understanding that as a municipality, we probably want to be sure that we can provide our municipal services as expected for a minimal of four months. But the auditor has repeatedly said on several occasions, he's, he or she's referenced two months and three months on different occasions.
So, four is healthy, two or three are in that kind of green zone, two to one, you get toward yellow, zero, you're at red, and that's a problem. Okay. I don't have anything else. I mean, I've been blue in the face talking about this, so I mean, I can talk more.
Doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I think some of the things that sort of have resonated with me through our discussions were particularly when the manager had said that earned income tax, it would take one or two, you know, some of our higher earners, where we would start to feel it. Somehow, I'm not sure entirely that our stamp program covered some of the crisis that Penn State is going through with layoffs and things like that, which would affect some of our earned income tax. So, that sort of, so having that be one of our strong legs without considering that. And then, again, I, in looking at the stamp book, when you look at the earners and the percentage, the boomers and the Gen Xers, we're at retirement age, and I'm assuming we're probably some of the higher earners. So, that sort of, to me, weakens that leg of the earned income tax. So, to me, I'm listening to what the manager is saying, and it makes sense. Gradual is good, I appreciate that. Tax increase, we heard it with UAJA report, operating expenses are going up. It's no different. Personnel costs are going up, it's no different. And I don't know, we did a whole lot of trimming. I don't know that we need to get severe. It sounds to me like there is a plan to do it, and like Amari, I think I'm exhausted from this. It's hard, but it's where we are.
Okay, whoever else?
I think I just want to highlight again, looking back at some information from past meetings, yes, we have trimmed as much as we can trim, but there are a lot of things in the township that we as a board value, that our residents value, our people, that we have people on staff that work 365 days a year, 24/7. Their health insurance costs have gone up over a million dollars. In the police department, almost one and a half million dollars in increases over time. Public works, the folks that are collecting your leaves and brush and working throughout the night in the winter to make sure that your commute to work the next day during a snowstorm is at least somewhat manageable. The materials for salt and diesel have gone up significantly as well. And even our library, that our contribution, which is, say, pray a little bit over-doubled, we understand the value that the public has on the library and want to be able to continue providing that service. So, at this point, you know, like, the way I see it, are, since we have trimmed as much as we can trim, like, if we don't raise revenues, really the only other option would be to reduce services, which I don't think would be a desirable outcome for the greater good of our community.
So, from my perspective and looking over this, and again, I do appreciate the trend and getting us to that avoid the 2027 cliff. My concern is this, I don't know if it's enough. And when I say I don't know if it's enough, I think we'll hit, if we were to follow this plan, we hit 2027 and things start to kind of get balanced out, but then, it sounds like we might have to revisit the tax conversation sooner than from 20, since 2008 to 2024. I think we're going to have to revisit the tax conversation sooner. So, my concern is if approaching this is maybe it's not enough. I'd like to see, because this is all increasing the revenue side of the house, it's not decreasing the expenditure side of the house. And we did go through things with a fine-tooth comb and a sharpened pencil and the analogies that we like to use. However, I know in our last meeting, Madam Manager, you mentioned that if we were to pass the budget and not do the increases, that you would come back to the table with a decreased budget, which might impact, impact or will impact services. I just... I'd still. That's all right. I needed my heart checked. Still there, still there. I'd still like to see some reduction in expenditures. I know the motion prior to this was about the budget moving it forward for public hearing. And between now and then, I'm hoping maybe we can have a deeper conversation around what could we do to decrease our expenditures by 2%. Maybe just 1%, something without impacting services that we could say as a good faith and a good way of expressing to the residents of the taxpayers, we hear you, we don't like the idea of raising taxes. But if we had to, and if we do vote on it, we're also dedicating that we're going to make cuts along the way. And if we could do that, right, it's a compromise. It's a balance. Nobody wins, you know, not one side wins and I'm not taking sides, but you know what I mean? If you come to the table and you say, I'm not going to get everything I want. But boy, if we could just reduce the budget by 1% this year, maybe another one and a half percent next year. Something like that, before we get into passing this, I'd like to see that in our budget for this year. Can we find a way to cut an extra one, one and a half percent to justify? Look, we're also doing our part on top of this. We're taking the going the extra mile. That's my question.
I if you don't mind, Matt, I'm sorry, I just want to make a comment. So I I would agree with that. And in part, I think what has been lost in some of the communications on my end is an acknowledgement that the proposed budget brought to the board really was a reflection of just a 2% increase of expenditures compared to last year's budget. And when you think about salaries alone being about a cold with a cola being about 3%, 3 to 3 and a half percent. That that's pretty significant and in fact is reflective of what you're asking. And and I can continue to to do that. Understanding that comes with a cost. And and so I think at this point, there's a cost to our to your constituents. And whether that's in the form of an increase in taxes, or it's in the form of a reduction of services that they will just need to probably accept and or find other utilization for services to to kind of offset what the township is no longer doing. But I would agree with you and I and I want to pledge that that is something that at a staff level we will continue to do, which is looking to see where we can trim. I think that this year you you were provided a pretty lean proposed budget and will continue to do that, acknowledging that to meet the goal as presented, we will get to a point where a line of services is completely cut, right? Whether that's an a new line, whether it be, I'm just going to throw random things out, right? Like you know, a a section of our engineering services, a section of our internal services that are being provided, whether it be through custodians to keep our building clean, like there will be an impact that will be felt by our our residents at some point. And so I just, I want to acknowledge that I completely agree that we have a responsibility to maintain our expenditures. And the proposed budget presented this year was really just a 2% increase from last year and and I don't know that we'll all we'll be able to get you a budget that will be a reduction in expenditures, just understanding that inflation can as long as inflation continues to rise, I think the goal is just keeping it at the level of which inflation is rising. And so we were able to do that by under by a percent.
No, and I truly appreciate the effort and everything and and understanding there was a lot upstream that happened before it came to us to look over this with a fine tooth comb. And again, I think, can we just go a little bit further? Can we just go one step, one percentage more?
I I absolutely will continue to pledge to try. I think I want the board to really to know it comes with a potential cost, right? Like we could lose really good talent. I'm just really concerned about the unintended consequences that come with that. And and that can be the case with with any decision that you make as policymakers. And so I don't I don't I don't know that there's a decision here at this point in time, because we've gone so long without increasing revenue. That is not going to have an intended consequence to your constituents and staff. And when I think about preparing a budget, I I can't present to you a budget that doesn't protect the welfare and safety of our staff as well as our our residents, as long as we're providing a level of service. So so I will continue to make that pledge, but I also really, really beg you all as elected officials to really give consideration to to doing something in the near future. Otherwise, the structure of how and what level of service that we provide to our residents will drastically change under your leadership in the next one to three years.
Completely understood. And again, I appreciate the context. I'm wondering too, when we look at the budgets, are there opportunities to not decrease services such as our investment in our local parks? I know there were plans that are already underway for things that a lot of the residents may not truly want or need, the improvements to Cecil Irvin, et cetera. There's one of the ways that we could maybe adjust things. I still think there are ways that we could easily, that we can find 1% without impacting service. And I'm not, I would, I would love to say, and as we did before, hiring freeze. Let's not hire anybody. Let's have the board, you know, approve any hires for a short amount of time until things right itself. You know, we talked about that. What other opportunities though are there? And again, I look to parks and the investment there. 1%. Can we find 1%?
May I?
Please, and this is, yeah.
I I agree with you 100%. 100%. I think there's an opportunity to find find 1% somewhere. But let's do a quick math exercise on that 1%. Off this paper, we can all align on this particular paper, 1% of this on the right hand side in the middle. $18 million, 1% would be $184,000. Well, if you divide 1% by 10, that's a tenth of a percent or $18,000. There are probably 10 $18,000 decisions that we've made over the year. Maybe even one over the last week. $18,000 decision. And we could have. We probably increased that number from some of those decisions. So it's on us too. It's not just the manager, it's on us too. We absolutely in the next CIP, absolutely, I'm going to take you up on that offer to say, we're going to remove A, B, and C and D. And and I'm going to be looking to you, sir, to be part of that. Because and yes, the manager can do, we can can freeze hiring, all this other stuff, but it doesn't equal $3 million a year. Right? So it's going to be a collection of things. It's going to be tactical, but I also agree with you, Mr. Thompson there that we also know that our residents appreciate our services. They appreciate this. I appreciate that. I appreciate the services of the township. Thank you, staff. Like, it's good stuff. And so if we want to go from better than good to good or lower than good, then let's talk about that. Let's make sure everybody's on the same page. Because that's what's going to happen. I I I'm convinced. Because the things that I think we both think are like, let's do these, you know, seven or eight things. We're not going to match that number because salts went from $40 to $90 a pound. It's it's not, we we have some of the best roads and delivery there.
Fully agreed. But and that's why I bring back the park.
Yep, I agree.
People, everyone I've talked to says, we don't want the expansion. But yet we're investing, we're investing, we're investing. So I call that one out specifically. And we're about to say tonight and then potentially on December 3rd, let's keep moving forward with something that residents aren't requesting. That is not one of these things. That is not public safety. That is not a road. That is not the things that the township folks use every day. That's even more than 1% savings. And these are the types of things, that in particular. But I can look at, you know, other examples. And as you said, we can we can separate that $180,000 10 ways, $18,000 decisions times 10. And yes, those were made and we talked about a lot of those and we came to consensus, right, as a board, and it was a give and take. But if I see things that aren't being requested, but we're just moving forward with plans because we're moving forward with plans, I get concerned. And that's where I'd like us to maybe say, hold on, let's take a look at maybe some of these other things that are like that. See, Slervin is one of them. And it's not drastic. It's not a hiring freeze. It's not, it's just something that if you if you list your categories of needs and wants, it falls into a want that people aren't asking for. Well, then, how much do we invest in that? So I don't want to approve a budget, I'm sorry, approve any tax changes until we say, but do we understand it? Can we make a little bit more of a concession? A little bit of a harder look on that. And maybe that's the conversation for December 3rd. Again, I'm not proposing anything drastic. But if we think about it, I think stuff like that could come off.
Well, help me understand. I I in order to maintain, we can bring down this from four months to two months or three months, it doesn't matter. A fund balance of six or five or four, it doesn't matter what the number is. There are drastic things that need to happen. Both revenue or that are going to have to happen, both revenue and expenses, just to keep a healthy fund balance.
Oh, sure.
Or reserve. So I'm I'm with you. Again, I'm with you. The talking 1%, it it's it's 20% at this point, right? So we've so there there's, I think, I think staff, they've certainly heard me because I talk too much. They've certainly, I generally think they've heard you. And so and and I think let our powers combine here and there's going to be some recommendations from staff going forward on how to kind of close that that gap, not just from one side, hey, everybody, pay more, pay more, pay more. It's all right, we're going to make some changes, i.e. we're not going to do full paving of every road now, like some some roads are just going to get tar and chip, which is half the cost of asphalt.
We don't tar and chip, though. Sorry.
Maybe we do. Maybe we start it because it's it's a third of the cost of microservicing, right? It it may have to be the thing we do going forward to get your your 1% and that one is actually more than 1%. At $15,000 a mile versus $50,000 a mile like that, that that's drastic. But if that's where we are as a community, where it's like, we got to take some really hard looks at some things, that's that's a thing.
So I just, I want to also bring to your attention, I think you have a good point, Matt Supervisor Heller, in that I would encourage all of you to to when we submit for so the way this works, right, is staff will follow a work plan based on policy that's been adopted by the board. So for example, there's been a recreation, it's RPOS, the Recreation Parks and Open Space Plan. That has master plans built out and it identifies how we're moving forward with park improvements. And then most of our parks have a master plan that has been adopted. And while you as a board, maybe you know, you're you're different than maybe the board that had adopted that policy, you are still the board, right? All of you come in individually and represent the board because individually you're an elected official, but you represent the board. And so staff will continue with the continuity remain that remains is the staff, right? The work plan, the board individual supervisors does change, but staff will continue with the continuity. So unless if there's been a policy item that's been repealed, so for example, Cecil Irvin, there is a master plan and that policy is in accordance with a a work plan. And so but there's still an opportunity for the board to give consideration as to, do you even want to generate the potential or possibility of a grant? Before staff submits a grant application, a resolution goes in front of the board. So you may recall earlier this year, there was a a resolution put in front of the board for consideration to adopt this by resolution, the submittal of a grant application. And so I just want to kind of bring to your attention as we continue to move forward that you will be able to inform on if we are continuing to advance a submission of a grant application. I think I think you raise a good point that maybe we are hearing from one or two individuals that don't want perhaps certain amenities within Cecil Irvin Phase Two. I think if you were to repeal the resolution to advance forward to receive that grant, you might hear from others then who do want it or or elements of that. And so to get the grant, it has to be comprised of several different amenities that is appealing to DCNR for them to give us the grant to build out several amenities within Phase Two. So I'm just bringing that as an example, only just to acknowledge that the board does have an opportunity to kind of say, you know what? Let's pass on that. I think another example, the roads, if the board wants to just say, you know, we're going to allocate X number of dollars for microsurfacing and that's it. Staff, here you go, figure it out. Then we will work within our purview. Your, you know, you don't necessarily get to determine who you're hiring. That is the role of the manager, whether it's me or a future manager. It's it's just per the charter. But what you can do is say, we're not going to allocate funding for this position. And then it will just, it will, it will just, it will be what it will be at that point. So your role as a board in your power is really to determine what you are authorizing for funding. And and if, going back to the roads, if if you want to cap the number of dollars for microsurfacing, we will by default only be able to do what you are telling us we can do with the funds. If you want to cap the number of dollars for paving, we will only be able to pave roads and we will have to prioritize based on the number of dollars allocated. So I I you know, it's really more of me encouraging you to to reassess and identify where your power is. You do have a great deal of power. But it's always going to be in what you're allocating funds for. And I will just always advocate that as long as you want, for example, policing services and public safety, that we always make sure that they're equipped with the tools that they need to go out and serve in the capacity of which they serve. Same with our first responders in public works. Those that we're sending out to make sure that they're plowing the roads and that they're responding to the crisis. For example, if there's a tree down and there is a blockage within traffic, that we are making sure that they have the tools that they need. And I would be remiss to say, sure, finance and tax, perhaps they're not out on the front lines, but they are collecting the service, you know, the taxes that are providing the dollars. So just acknowledging that when it does come to staff, I I urge all of us to to find some unified approach to how we're having these public televised communications because our staff watch these meetings as well. And so we always want to, and I know you all care and have always voiced your priority for staff as well as making sure there's that balance. So just kind of bringing back to the to the forefront, your power is the allocation of funding or to slice and dice the power, you know, to slice and dice the allocation of funding. And then we will work within the constraints that we have. But then I think, as mentioned previously, there are uncontrollable expenses. We see public insurance for public officials increasing. We see insurance for policing increasing. There are just so many out of our control elements that are increasing that we have to generate revenue. And we've been really fortunate not to raise taxes for several years that we have to start figuring out what that plan looks like.
And if I may, and I applaud that the levers that we've talked about at the last meeting, we don't see the earned income tax going up, right? The levers that are being used, the real estate, millage, the property, transfer tax, et cetera, those are other levers. So I'm encouraged again by that use. I I'm also reminded that sometimes, I was just playing Monopoly with my son and daughter the other night. Sometimes when things and finances are constrained, you just have to go around the board, collect the 200,000, I'm sorry, your $200 every time around, hope that you don't get hit with a luxury tax or something else along the way or plumbing breaks, whatever. You don't go building things. You don't have hotels that you want. You don't buy more properties. You just say, okay, this is, these are the lean times until we get flush. So I think it's an important one for us to keep in mind. So you may hear that Monopoly analogy in the upcoming years, we do look at those proposals as they come across. And again, I look at this and I applaud the use, the fact that we're not using the earned income tax, that we have other levers here, that we're thinking about this thoughtfully. And I'm hoping that we can pave maybe a different course going forward where we can be just out of the gate, thinking about the budget and the impact, knowing that this is a tough decision for all of us when it comes down to taxes. And, you know, love to avoid this, having to make these decisions for longer periods of time between them. So again, I will still be an advocate for what else can we do a little bit more on that budget between now and December 3rd, if there's anything else maybe for the public hearing that board members would wish to contribute or find or say, what about this one more thing? If we could find some more, I'd I'd be happy in, you know, I I'd be I'd I'd be pleased. And I think, you know, a lot of folks in in Ward One would be pleased too to see that we're going a little further. My only comments. Oh, except I do have other comments. Oh, except I do have other comments. Just in summarizing that, the Tax Review Board, I, I understand there's an elect, not an elected, it's an ABC board, where there are four seating, sitting members right now of the Tax Review Board. And I believe of the seven seats that are open, that they can still meet and have a quorum, et cetera, and I'm curious to know, where do they fit into reviewing this, and how does that come about to get them potentially spun up to review this and offer insights?
Great question. So the Charter very clearly defines what their duty and power is as a, as a Tax Review Board, and so it's a seven-seat board, and we have confirmed and discussed, and been in conversation with three of those four members that you mentioned, and so I don't have confidence that we would have a quorum, but I, I can assure you that our staff has provided a very detailed, a very thorough approach to advertising and promoting our ABC vacancies that I think has been provided to the board. And, you know, I think that the recruitment of ABCs is all of our responsibilities, while our Communications Coordinator and our Assistant Township Manager, they do a great deal of effort to go out and solicit folks to want to apply, we encourage all of our appointed officials, as well as our elected officials, to, to really rally, rally those that you know, and encourage them to want to serve as an ABC member. But with that said, the duties and the power of the Tax Review Board is that, for example, if the board had authorized a tax increase, we would then take the proposed tax increase as it's described in the Charter, and we would put that in front of them, and they would discuss review, and then come back with a, you know, a confirmed recommendation or an alternative recommendation. They are also charged with putting up, like, a plan, in terms of like, just a, what do you want to call it, like a, like a financial plan? And so, in a, in a scenario where the Tax Review Board was meeting more regularly, as perhaps they should be, it doesn't indicate that they have to meet so often, there's no frequency of time that they should be meeting, but that they are putting forth a financial plan, and having it presented to the board for their board's consideration, and then also, they're also responsible for exonerating certain items that get submitted as appeals to the Finance Department. We've researched, and we haven't seen for, you know, and I'm not indicating that this is justification during my two and a half years here as your manager, but we haven't been able to confirm that the Tax Review Board has been convened since 2001. And as you know, we've increased taxes in 2008 and in 2012, so we were able to find minutes in 2001 for the Tax Review Board, so I'm not sure if this is maybe a suggestion or maybe the point, but I think we could do a lot more with our Tax Review Board, just as soon as we can get a quorum. And so I think I would encourage all of you to, to find those in your neighborhood, those that you know in the township, and encourage them to submit applications to serve particularly on our Tax Review Board, and we'd be happy to convene them and present to them a, a plan for increasing taxes. But before it would go to the Tax Review Board, it would be a plan that perhaps what we've presented to you this evening, that you would accept, and then refer to the Tax Review Board for their review and consideration for a recommendation, and that's kind of how we, we, we see the Tax Review Boards operating and, and what their role would look like.
So I have a couple clarifying questions about the Tax Review Board. Four members seated, three that we've been in contact with, one that we've not. Is there anything that requires us to have seven on this, or could it be a board of four?
It has to, so the Charter does indicate what the terms are for those seven, the representation of the wards, as well as it confirms seven board members, or seven members of the Tax Review Board.
But if we can have four there, then we have a quorum.
That is, that is how it works, yes.
Okay. So if the motion were to pass tonight on this, or the recommendation, then we would attempt to bring in a quorum and have them review it by December 3rd, or?
That would be a really lofty goal.
So how would this work in, just, just reality, if it does pass tonight?
Absolutely, so we would certainly try to spin up and have, have them meet, and try to, you know, maybe more aggressively, try to reach out to this particular member that hasn't been responsive, and see if we can get a quorum. But in the scenario where they are unable to meet, we do not need, the Charter does not require the Tax Review Board present a recommendation in order for a tax increase, it is not required that they convene and provide a recommendation. Instead, like every other ABC, they are established more as like a citizen engagement process, so we would do our best, if this were to pass, to try and get that, that group together for a meeting. I think December 3rd admittedly is a lofty goal, but we would try. And if we were unable to convene them, I would say that, if we were unable to convene them by December 3rd, there's still merit for them to meet in the near future, or at the earliest we can get them to meet, to continue to review the subsequent years as presented here on this plan for increased taxes.
Okay, I would appreciate the review before anything's passed, so, again, just thinking out loud here. Okay, those are my only comments. Thank you, appreciate the details.
I'll submit mine before we go around again. I think, I want to acknowledge all the work that staff did and that we did during the budget sessions, because we really did, as we said in that earlier agenda item, try to consider each and every line item in the budget, so there was no, you know, broad okay of the budget, we really didn't pay attention to all those details. I think, as some have mentioned, I think what can still be done is consideration of slowing the pace of the capital projects in our CIP, and that was, you know, really stressed in the stamp report, was that we have a very ambitious CIP, you know, and that's, we've been very aggressive on major capital projects for a number of years, and if you look at old CIPs, you can see that cliff that they showed at the end of those number of years, you could see those projections as, you know, this is not, you know, compatible with us staying sustainable financially, so it was, you know, it was clear there, so we needed to really monitor, and there were a number of years where we tried different approaches with road projects, and, you know, when supplies and, and different things were cheaper, we would invest more and try to get ahead of the road projects, or there's been different attempts and different strategies to try to do those things. And that CIP, of course, includes the roads and the parks and vehicles and all those major, major purchases, so I think there is still work that can be done there in slowing out the pacing of all of those things. So I think that's a very doable project for us to be looking at in the future, and, and acknowledging all the big, big things that have been accomplished, say in the past four, five, six years, major, major projects. And so I think, you know, that part of it doesn't speak entirely to the increased cost in operations, so we've had, you know, operational costs increase, the cost of the services we provide, as well as, you know, the amount of people living here, and, and, you know, the number of roads we're taking care of has only increased, so while they go together, I think there is some separation in, in the conversations as well, so that's all I wanted to add at this point. Look to any other discussion, you know, was, wherever you all left, I wasn't able to be present at the Wednesday meeting.
I guess I'm just sort of curious where the process goes from here, when do we, when do we, is, is it part of the budget at the next meeting where we vote on our, our thoughts about the tax increase? Because right now, I am supportive of what is presented here, and what the manager, the plan that she had presented initially. So what, what is the process? Where do we, where and when do we vote?
Yeah, I'll look to the manager on timing, you know, what, how the discussion was left Wednesday, I guess, and then if there were some options to what's presented here, discuss, perhaps, some different levels of increase, and then bringing that back, if there is some kind of consensus here for, for discussion on the 3rd, I would anticipate.
Well, to answer Supervisor Stevenson's question directly, I mean, you can vote anytime, I will happily take your vote, if it's to increase the tax, and it can be what's proposed, it can be less, it can be more, it can be what exact. If somebody wants to make a motion, and it gets seconded, and then there's consensus, then we will go ahead and integrate that in, and that's what you'll see for December 3rd. If the board has consensus to continue the conversation at a later time, I, I will assist with that facilitation. I mean, as your manager, I, I think I've been pretty, pretty direct and pretty, pretty clear about the concerns that I have, right, in terms of, of being the manager and, and looking at the expenditures and how they have exceeded revenue, I think our Finance Director was able to date it back to like 2016, 2017. And so it, it's a concern, the year I was appointed, I did a presentation for the CIP, and that introduction said to the board at that point in time, you can, you don't have to do anything this year, but we have to do something in the next couple of years, and so we're here. I will gladly entertain a tax, a motion for a tax increase this evening at a rate that you all are most comfortable, and continue to carry that, the subsequent, the plan for the subsequent years for continued further discussion among a Tax Review Board. And so we can be a little bit more maybe intentional, with more time to hear back from the Tax Review Board for the subsequent years. So I just want to be direct in my response to Supervisor Stevenson, that it could be this evening.
This is Patty. I'd like to make a motion that we approve a 1.5 real estate millage tax and a property
I'm not hearing a second on that.
Okay, so, if, if I may, I, in, just in the dialogue earlier, there, there was some, how can we do this from both sides, both ends of the, of the candle, I guess I'll say, I don't know. And, so I think I would, Supervisor Stevens, I would, it would, it would be, in my opinion, to kind of maybe go with half of what's here, and then see where we are with some of those other initiatives, because I, I truly believe that our manager and the team are already looking at those other options from the, from the expense side, I truly do, and I think there's going to be some efficiencies achieved over the next year with just some, just, the, the things I just see as an outsider looking in, looking kind of, there's some, some good stuff happening.
Are you making a motion?
So, so, would you like me to, or would you?
Just withdraw your motion.
She didn't have to, it died. No second.
Nobody seconded, you didn't second it.
So, I move to put forth an increase in real estate millage of .75, and property transfer tax of .12.
This is Patty, I'll second.
Okay, discussion, you made the motion.
Speaks for itself. Again, this is, well, I mean, at the end of the day, we, I mean, we've talked about this already, this, this is a, we, we cut a lot, and so just being able to take a balanced approach here, this year, start with a little bit, see where we are next year, the can has been kicked for several years now.
Yes.
Yeah, my only, my only question is really about process here, because we didn't have a recommended motion, and this was advertised for discussion, for consideration of options, that's my question, is do we bring this back?
That's a good point.
Next, for the, for the December 3rd, I don't know if it requires a public hearing or not to, but, but to bring this back for the December 3rd, and advertising it with...
Absolutely, so if the board has consensus this evening, we can go ahead and update the budget, so when we bring it back December 3rd, it's reflective of what we hear as consensus this evening, and we can also prepare a resolution that will formally enact the, the tax increase, and, and represent consensus and the, the millage rate increase and the, the percentage of the real estate transfer tax. So, yes, tonight would be more of approval that we all agree to move forward in this direction, and we'll do the policy document updates at the December 3rd.
Okay, so do you want to vote on that, or do you just want consensus?
A vote would assure staff that the time that we invest to update the, the budget, as well as the prepare, the policy document, is, is affirmed by your vote.
Well, okay, so maybe there's another, there's another way, I'm just throwing this out there, so we're, we're gonna approve a budget that has a gaping hole in it, this revenue discussion is gonna fill the hole a little bit. So I, I don't know that they necessarily need to be together immediately, could we go in the next meeting, you know, public hearing for the budget, through the budget as is?
We need to submit in December to the Tax Office what our increase would be, if we want to see that reflective in the tax.
Sure.
But can that be December 3rd? Because I, what I'm hearing, you're, if we can table the vote right now, and you have consensus from a majority on this, and then you bring it back for a vote, I'm just hesitant to take a vote on this without it having been advertised as a, an actionable item, so...
So, so the vote could just be to direct staff to prepare the policy document, like there's consensus to hold the public hearing and advertise for the public hearing at the December 3rd meeting?
Because this will require a public hearing.
Right, because if, we will, and we will adopt by a resolution, and we would need to advertise that resolution, and we would need to specifically indicate what we're advertising. So if the board has general consensus on a .75 millage increase, we would advertise the resolution that, that, you know, that, that the board would be taking action to adopt a tax increase at the December 3rd meeting. But if you wait to just have the discussion and the general vote, we wouldn't, we wouldn't know exactly what you would be agreeing to in terms of what the actual tax increase is, whereas tonight, that you are just agreeing, that you're essentially directing staff to prepare the, the policy document to reflect the proposed tax increase as you all agreed to what might be on the table this evening. So this evening, you're just directing staff to prepare the policy documents, which would be the update to the budget and the resolution.
I move to amend my motion to include direct staff to the rest of my motion, direct staff, dot, 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 the rest of my motion earlier.
This is Patty, I'll second.
So now we have two motions to vote on, one, the amendment to the original motion, and then the motion. So, the amendment is the directing staff to do the original motion, and now we're gonna bring it all together.
Okay, let's put on the amendment. Right?
Yes.
I'm looking at my marbles for those people, okay. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any of us say no?
No.
Okay, so your motion is to direct staff to...
For the .75 and the 1.2.
Prepare the budget.
Prepare the resolution and, I guess, for public hearing, for the .75 and the .12.
Okay, discussion on that.
I would have added a caveat, in addition to reducing the budget by one percent, again, to something more. That would be my only addition.
What specifically?
Well, we can go through the budget, you know...
We did that.
We did, we did, but I also heard the manager at last meeting say that she could come back with a budget that, I know that example would reduce services, so there has to be something between that and what we passed, and I'd be curious to turn to the manager and see what that, what was meant by that, and what you could...
So at the last meeting, it was different, we had adequate time to prepare an agenda, so we, because Thanksgiving, because of the holiday, we actually will be finalizing the agenda packet, I'm looking over at the Assistant Manager with the modified schedule that we have, finalizing it, I think, this Thursday, or this, this Thursday, because, as you know, I'll look to the Chair and the Vice Chair, we would generally do our BOS Agenda Review the Friday after Thanksgiving. Um, and which would mean you would receive it on Thanksgiving, but we won't be working on Thanksgiving. So we just don't have adequate time to prepare and do a review. It would be like a shot in the dark, quite honestly Supervisor Heller, to just figure out how best to, to reduce one percent. And our work plan, it, it would just, it would, it would be a challenge.
I'm gonna say, I hear you and I think we can do that next year and following it. She's heard us loud and clear. We need to move forward. We need to plan. This is what we as a board are here to do, provide guidance. She's asked for more. We've, we've shown good faith on any number of level. I mean, that's just so, anyway.
I agree.
Okay. Other discussion on the motion?
A little perplexed by amending the motion to include cutting the budget by one percent when the board is responsible for passing the budget. Where we can go in there and say, Madam Manager, we've cut the budget by one percent. This is what you got to work with. So.
So can, maybe I amend it to say, let's cut that number by this. This is what we have to work with. If I'm hearing you correctly.
I'm, I'm gonna say we already did that because it was a proposed one point five and we went half. That, again, that's a revenue thing, not an expense thing. But I think you're holding her absolutely ironclad to something that she's been doing in practice all along. Just my two cents.
No, and I'm, I'm holding everybody. Yeah. And so, no, and that's why I wanted the discussion is really what can we do a little bit more of? And if we're saying nothing, that, that's fine. Then that's the answer. And I understand this year and revisiting it next year and I, I appreciate coming back to the table and through the CIP and everything, you know, making some harder decisions.
Simple question, actually, um, between, I guess through all the budget sessions, how much did we cut from the original?
I believe it was a, it was a little, um, little under nine hundred thousand, if memory serves me right.
Does that include the TIF, the, the transfer out?
Well, hard numbers, right?
Hard numbers. We reduced about nine hundred thousand.
So it was nineteen point four million dollars roughly budget. We got it down to eighteen point four. Nineteen point five to eighteen point four. Wrong number, wrong, nineteen point four to eighteen point five.
Yeah.
So we did five percent. You want one more percent? So I, I'm not caring.
I'm ready.
Yeah, the motion's there, right?
Yeah, call the question.
So yes, we have a motion and a second. And this is about the directing of the staff to move this forward for December 3rd meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Is that four one?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks everyone for that discussion.
Yes.
Okay. Let me find my place. Okay. Now we are moving to new business. Up first is the consent agenda. Did anyone need to remove anything for discussion? And if not, I'll take a motion.
Ms. Lamari, I move to approve the consent agenda.
This is Patty. I'll second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. All right. Okay. We'll move to discussion on an ordinance amendment to the code of ordinances at the Township of Ferguson, Center County, Pennsylvania. Chapter fifteen, motor vehicles and traffic, part two, section two oh five, traffic signals at certain locations. Section two oh nine, turning at certain intersections prohibited or restricted. Section two fourteen, stop intersections established and section two seventeen, school zones established. And we'll go to Mr. Modric.
Thank you. So as we construct traffic signals, we also update the motor vehicle code. So we know that we're building a signal at Science Park Sandy North. And the same, um, goes for the school zone that we established on, um, Cherry Street at the Radio Park Elementary School. So attached in your packet are revisions to the, to the ordinance for the motor vehicle code that addresses the installation of those two, uh, traffic control devices as well as some other items that were, I'll just say cleanup, that were noticed during the review. That should be added as we are making these changes to the motor vehicle ordinance. And there's a recommended motion in your packet.
All right. Thank you. Anyone care to make the motion?
This is Matt. Move that the supervisors approved authorization for advertisement of a public hearing to amend chapter fifteen, motor vehicle and traffic, part two, section two oh five.
Ms. Lamari, second.
All right. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. All right. Thank you. Okay. Next up is approval of a memorandum of understanding agreement between Ferguson Township and the State College Borough Water Authority. And we'll go to the manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Provided with the agenda is a MOU. Uh, presented is a MOU between the township and the State College Borough Water Authority for your consideration. And while there are some areas of, um, there are sections of the MOU being reviewed just to bring clarification as it relates specifically to the section one, uh, for any potential sub-grant lease, uh, provision between the township and the authority for being, uh, available to be the recipient of grant funding that is restricted only for municipalities as opposed to an authority. Uh, there is just a review by solicitor to ensure that that clarification is, is provided and vetted and supported by the State College Borough Water Authority. Uh, so this evening the board is asked to take action to approve the MOU that can then be executed between the executive director of the State College Borough Water Authority and myself.
All right. Thank you. If someone can make a motion.
Ms. Lamari, I move to approve the, move to approve the manager, manager's execution of the memorandum of understanding agreement between Ferguson Township and the State College Borough Water Authority.
This is Matt. I'll second.
All right. Any discussion?
Yes. This is awesome. Exclamation point. Uh, we, I think I've heard about this maybe a year and a half ago. There were some rumblings about water issues in Ward one. When I talked to constituents about it, there was some concern. I still hear about that concern. This is the first step and I'm excited of that, that we're gonna work with the Borough Water Authority to the extent that they can, uh, get those improvements out there for those residents or to, as we move forward, trying to move forward and help those residents, um, get some improvements out there.
All right. Other discussion? Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. All right. Thank you. Okay. Moving to communications to the board. Anything, anyone needed to share?
I've received a communication, um, about some of the tax things that we heard tonight, the discussion around taxes. Um, and I also about the, um, the response, actually, quite honestly, the, the Ferguson Township Board response. Um, uh, and some concerns about the increase in UAJA as, as a result of, um, yeah, their litigation.
I just had a communications regarding the, oh, what was that? Well, the budget as well as, uh, the, the work that, uh, Chantel is doing on the fiber optics. So.
Communications related to the budget and, um, again, the glow fiber going in, et cetera.
Nothing additional.
Can you say nothing additional at all this as well? Um, okay. Then I did just want to point out, um, township offices closed November twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. And our two December board meetings are December 3rd and December 10th are regular meetings. Anything else? I'm not seeing anything. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved to.
And I'll second and we're adjourned. Thanks everyone.
Okay. Thank you.
Congratulations.